Twenty-two meeting of the planning commission to order. At the introductions. To my far, well, to my immediate right, Mr. George Weber of Madison. I'm Bob Schwartz of the Bowling Green District. Mr. Purcell Minor of Manapana- Manapana is not present. Dr. Carol Horton, Port Royal District, and Mr. J D Young of Reedy Church. We have Mr. Mike Fincham, who is our director of planning. Mr. Greg Pennington, our planner, and Ms. Lisa Zick, our administrative assistant. She's the one that really makes the ball roll around here. With that, I would like to invite you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do not have any minutes prepared for approval at this time. Do we have any unfinished business?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on our unfinished business is S P E X zero-two dash twenty-two. Applicants requesting approval of special exception permit to repeal and replace the previous special exception for special events facility pursuant to Article Four, Section five point two-three of the Caroline County zoning ordinance. The following staff report was presented at the public hearing on August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, at which ti- at which time the applicant requested deferral. No changes have been made to the report or to the supporting documents at this time. From the last meeting, the planning commission asked that condition nineteen be changed to reflect the numbers in the other special except special events facilities that are operating in the county. And so, condition nineteen would be the only change to the numbers there.
Any discussion or questions of staff?
Excuse me, what exactly was that change, please?
I believe it in it not to go ahead, sir.
Sorry, it was to match the numbers of events that are allowed per year to the other special events facilities in the county. We don't have those numbers right here, and so, but we'll make those match in that condition.
Hundred twenty? Hundred and twenty events.
Okay, what I have here in my notes is that the other special events facility that I think you all were referring to, it said seventy-five events of two hundred people allowed, a hundred events of a hundred and seventy people allowed, any day of the week. And the notes here say that you all felt that what we, what staff had put in the staff report was a little too restrictive, and you wanted to make sure that that there was fairness across the board, and you wanted the numerical conditions to reflect the same as the Barnes at Manapana Springs. I believe, and I know Mr. and Mrs. Sullivan are here, that what they originally had asked for may have actually been equal to what was in that other special exception, and I'm sure they can can correct me on that.
What what they originally asked for was a hundred and fifty.
Okay, that's what you originally asked for, a hundred and fifty?
That's what the applicant originally asked for, was a hundred and fifty total events.
And what, as far as the other ones that we have under the same regulation, how many are we allowing for them?
I I believe they have a hundred and s- what was the number, Lisa? I believe they have a hundred and seventy-five total.
Yes, it's a hundred and seventy-five.
They have a hundred and seventy-five total. And so, we can change that condition to one seventy-five for you, however, or leave it at one fifty, however you guys want.
Well, I just think that since we established that number for all the rest of them, then I think we should make sure that a hundred and seventy-five is included for them as well. Thank you.
Mr. Pennington, I agree that it it would even the playing field, so to speak, and do it across the board, and that way, we don't have to deal with it on a case-by-case basis.
And that, and Ms. Zuck, you said that was any day, right? Hundred seventy-five is any day?
Yes, that's what I have here in my notes. I don't have the actual conditions, but the notes, it looks like that was the discussion.
So, yeah, because I believe I was the one that had brought it up in August.
There was a hundred and seventy-five any day.
Yeah, I was asking what the other, so I think, yeah, should reflect, I agree, should reflect what the other event venues are allowed.
I agree as well.
All right, with that, can we, do we have a motion?
I would make a motion on S P X O-two twenty-twenty-two that we revise the applicant to match the same numbers as the rest of the special events calendar. So therefore, I would say we go to a hundred and seventy-five for all of them, and on that case, I would make a motion to approve this application.
Okay, so the motion's on the floor to approve S P X O-two twenty-twenty-two as presented by staff with the change to condition number nineteen to a hundred and seventy-five events. Was that any day?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and it's been seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
I see Mr. Sullivan and Mrs. Sullivan are present. Just want to thank you, Scott, for all of your service to us, and wish you the best of holidays, my friend.
I second that totally. I said it at the last time. I just, I appreciate all your hard work. People don't understand how much work goes into this, but you did a great job, and you'll be missed.
All right, next is S P E X O-six twenty-twenty-two, North New Earth, Virginia LLC owner, Jordan Duquette, applicant. Where was staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Update to the previous staff report from the last month. Planning Commission had a public hearing, deferred action, and scheduled site visits to visit the New Earth site, which took place earlier this week. The applicant has stated they're providing new information regarding the on-call medical staff for the facility, and he's working on getting new license there. From a staff perspective, we think that it may be more appropriate to look at the rural resort portion of the zoning ordinance and work that for Mr. Duquette's facility, as it seems like it may be more of a rural resort than a therapeutic health facility. But that would be up to the planning commission if you want to address it as a therapeutic health facility, or if we should look at the rural resort portion of the ordinance to adjust that for this project.
Well, what what would be the difference?
The requirements under.
Yeah, I mean, what would be the difference requirement?
Therapeutic health facility, you're required to have medical staff on call at all times. You are are there to treat an a- an issue, whether it's a mental issue or physical issue, anything like that, not just to go and meditate or things like that. So we're looking at the meditation aspect of it as more of a rural resort type of use.
And I think during the presentation, it it was presented that they're looking at at corporate retreats and and that type of use. And after listening to the presentation, it it was a struggle from the beginning as to the appropriate classification for this request. The more information that's come out, the more it leads staff to the position that this really does not qualify as a therapeutic healthcare facility. And it's more in keeping with a resort type of operation. It's a different set of regulations, and it it's going to require some amendments to those regulations, but we think this is probably a good case to to look at those those standards and make the modifications based upon this application.
Is a rural resort? Okay, if if we pass it, is that if if the facility decides in the future they want to come back and apply for therapeutic health, is that an option for them in the future?
That would be an option in the future. It would require a change in the program that elevates it to the level of a therapeutic healthcare facility. If and when that occurs, then they could apply for the use at that time.
Okay.
Mr. Fincham, I think that rural retreat, as it stands right now, is a more appropriate designation based upon what has been presented and what we learned during the site visit. Going into the requirement for having qualified medical personnel, I think opens an avenue that may or may not be advantageous to go down. So I I I think the rural retreat would be the more appropriate category to pursue.
So what what we would need to do is we'll need to work with the applicant to refile their application under the rural resort, rural retreat land use classification. Along with that, we will look at the standards for rural resorts. Again, it's going to require some modifications. For example, they have, I believe it's a hundred and eighty acres of land, which is less than the minimum lot size for a rural resort. However, given the amount of acreage they have and and the proposed program, a hundred and eighty acres is more than enough for for the for a facility based up based upon the programs they want to provide. So we'll look at the ordinance, prepare some suggested change or amendments to to the standards, bring that to you along with the amended application for the zoning amendment for a rural resort, and those can be processed concurrently.
I must say, I was impressed with what we saw and what we learned, and I understand and I embrace, I guess, the holistic mind, body, and soul approach. But here again, I I just think that there could be a stumbling block with the requirement for qualified medical personnel. But could be some liability issues there for the applicant, and that needs to be considered a little bit further, in my opinion.
Has this been discussed with the applicant yet?
Yes, briefly, I discussed it with the applicant at the last site visit earlier this week. And he can address that if the commission would like him to.
Yeah, I think I would like to hear from the applicant if if he has any comments.
Hello, everyone. Yeah, Mr. Fincham told me about it on the site visit with Mr. with Purcell, and it sounds like the right designation to me, because really, when we first initially came in, I asked, I asked the, you know, the department, I said, what should we designate under? And at that time, I was told therapeutic health facility.
Okay.
So I didn't know there were other designations available, and it's probably told that because the requirements on rural resort as they are now are too strict, stringent for our our property. So that made that made the most sense at the time. But if there begin to be amendments to it, then I would be okay with that, and that sounds like a good plan to me, because it does fit more under a rural resort, one hundred percent.
Okay.
And you may find it more advantageous not to have the medical personnel requirement.
Yeah, I I completely agree. We will have to have people trained in first aid. We will have to have standard defibrillator panel paddles and stuff like that onsite in case of wrongful death lawsuits and things like normal liability insurance company or get to our things anyway, but you are correct, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Duquette.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Oh, we need, oh, okay, it is a wonderful facility. I mean, the property that is, I think all of us, many of us, I would say, have made comments about how wonderful it is. So what do we need, a deferral?
I I think that's appropriate action. I would recommend that we defer it for sixty days. Again, we're going to have to amend the application to to a new classification, so we will come back with a new classification and the any suggested modifications to the rural resort standards within sixty days should be fine for us to be able to get that back to you.
So I would suggest that we defer it at this time for the next sixty days and allow staff to bring a new change so that we can review it before we make any decisions.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a clarification? Instead of sixty days, since we're a week early this month, can we just say to the February planning commission meeting?
Okay, to the fir- February planning commission meeting.
I second.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Mrs. Zuck, if you will, read the protocol for the public hearing, please.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the commission. The purpose of the public hearing is for Caroline County Planning Commission to listen carefully to the verbal expression of position and opinion from the citizens of Caroline County. Public hearings are not question-and-answer sessions or debates, and all statements should be addressed to the chair. When members of the public offer comment, they need to clearly state their name and voting district prior to making their comments. Applicants or their representative will be allowed fifteen minutes to adri- to introduce information regarding the matter advertised for public hearing. And persons speaking are requests respectfully requested to keep comments brief, not to exceed three minutes, and to address only those issues pertinent to the matters advertised for public hearing.
All right, S P X zero-seven twenty-twenty-two. James and Kelly Curtley, owner, applicant. Who have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The staff report remains mostly unchanged from the November meeting. The updates is included in your packet as a new site map of the facility provided by the applicant depicting the meets and bounds of the facility, and the suggesting suggested conditions have been revised since the November seventeenth meeting. Would you like me to read all the conditions, or?
Wait, um. Okay, correct me if I'm wrong, and we're not using, they're not using Porta-Johns anymore. There's a onsite sewage disposal system?
They will be required to do onsite sewage disposal system unless they get a pump and haul permit from the board supervisors.
But they can bring in temporary restroom facilities to to connect to the onsite sewage disposal system.
Correct.
Which I believe was what their desire was.
Okay, so, because I noticed that's a change. Are we still talking though about like a trailer or a Porta-Johns or whatever?
And so, if you think back to the Ola facility, the Barnes at Manapana, their original plan was to install the drain field and bring in the porta potty trailer to hook to the drain field, and that's what this applicant plans to do as well.
Okay, all right, got you.
Mr. Pennington, under the suggested conditions, item eighteen, a maximum of thirty events shall be held in any calendar year. Do we need to change that to bring it in line with the the other facilities?
That would be up to the planning commission. The Magnolia Fields Special Events Facility, the first year of operation, they were limited to thirty events, and they came back to amend that permit to allow for more events. The Barnes at Manapana were limited more on their first go-round than the second one as well. It wasn't quite as low as thirty, but they came back with a second special exception to raise their number of events. But that would be a decision of the planning commission as to how you wanted to move forward on that condition.
This is a little bit smaller facility too than the others.
All right, so there's no harm of foul in leaving it as is for the first year, and if necessary, we can come back and increase it.
The app, if if necessary, if the applicant wanted to increase it, they can make another application next year and come back with an amended plan.
Would there be a cost to the applicant?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's always good to have a trial period on on these types of uses. So as opposed to maximizing the the use initially, we haven't had any problems with with any of our facilities, but if you set a significantly higher number to begin with and you have problems, it's going to be difficult to back that number down.
Understood, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pennington. Would the applicant here to make any comments or presentation? Would you come forward, please, so it can be recorded?
Would you like me to explain my thoughts as I did last month?
You you are Ms. Kelly Sullivan? Okay, Curtley. Curtley, Curtley, I'm sorry. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, my name is Kelly Curtley, and this is my husband, James. Last April, we pers- purchased a hundred and thirty-five acre farm off of Newtown Road. After a short period of time there, we decided we needed to share the natural beauty of the farm with others. The gorgeous setting, open space, and rustic barn quickly steered us in the direction of establishing a wedding and special event venue. We've spent the last eighteen months making improvements to the property. We've had power run to the barn, landscaped the property, planted more than forty trees, painted and organized the outbuildings, and added an impressive front entrance. Our role will be to help organize, coordinate, and execute an event while providing the ceremony space and reception dwelling. Our intentions are to utilize five acres centrally located on the property. We believe we can comfortably host up to a hundred and fifty guests in our existing forty-by-sixty barn and open backyard area. We've designated nearly two acred acres to accommodate parking. We will not be catering the events. Guests will need to hire a caterer or food truck to provide food. If alcohol is served, clients will need to apply for their own banquet A B C license for each event. We will be responsible for bringing in a bathroom trailer and having it removed following the event. Our goal is to host events during the spring-to-fall wedding season. These will take place on the weekend, generally Saturday afternoon or evening. Live music is possible at some events, but will end by ten P M. The barn and event site is centrally located on the hundred and thirty-five acres, so it is well removed from all surrounding neighbors. We've brought a letter containing signatures of neighbors in support of the venue. We did not come across any with an opposition. In regards to our community, our intentions are to encourage clients to support several local businesses for their events, including food preparation, flowers, music, photography, hair and nail salons, et cetera. We are in the process of introducing ourselves to local businesses and look forward to establishing and maintaining relationships with them as the venue becomes active. In preparation of the venue, we have obtained a federal I D. number, activated a business with the State Corporation Commission, and received a business license from Caroline County. We believe this is a needed service that will enhance our community and provide a beautiful venue option to families in the area. We thank you for your consideration and ask for your support. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Preparing no questions from the commissioners, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question of staff. We continue, of staff, we continued this public hearing, correct?
That is correct, so you would need to open the public hearing at this time, and then we can continue discussion after the public.
Before you do that, can you remind why we continued, remind us why we continued? I was thinking part of that, we just needed updated information, right?
Needed updated information, but I'll defer to Mr. Fincham since I was absent from the last meeting.
Yes, that's that's correct. The 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 initial G D P didn't have some information related to, you know, distances, et cetera. That information's been updated after a meeting onsite with the Curtleys, and I I think we're ready to go there.
Okay, that's, I I thought it was the inform- more information. Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll reopen the public hearing on S P E X O-seven twenty-twenty-two. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter? Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter? Third call, anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing and hearing no one come forward, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion by the commissioners? We will entertain a motion.
Yes, sir, I'll make a motion. I believe that S P X O-seven twenty-twenty-two where is the special exception request for S P X O-seven twenty-twenty-two appears to be generally consistent with the goals and objective of the comprehensive plan and future land use map. And whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants the approval of this request, I recommend that S P E X O-seven twenty-twenty-two be forwarded to the board supervisor with a recommendation of approval.
Is there a second?
With the new conditions, correct? Is it, this blew a new condition?
Yeah, with the new conditions that have been added.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Any and all matters, comprehensive plan amendment, chapter nine, transportation. Staff provide an overview?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The G W, George Washington Regional Commission, is going to assist the planning department in the update to the transportation portion, chapter nine of the comprehensive plan. Provided a copy of chapter nine to for you to familiar familiarize yourself with the document. Many goals of the transportation portion of the comprehensive plan have changed since the last update, and we would like to discuss at the January meeting goals for the new transportation section of the comprehensive plan, which includes adding bicycle and bicycle and pedestrian facilities into the comprehensive plan, along with some road improvements. There's nothing to do tonight, just familiarize yourself with chapter nine, and we would like to discuss it at the work session in January before the public hearing at the January regularly scheduled meeting.
Thank you, sir. And R Z O-six twenty-twenty-two, Valco Caroline County LLC applicant, proposed data central center park.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, you also have a map that was laid out at your desk to go with this rezoning application. This application is a request for an. This application is a request for an expedited public hearing uh that is uh is an economic development project. Uh that has been filed uh and forwarded to you for your consideration. In working with uh the board of supervisors, the applicant has. Roughly a six-month window which ends the end of March. For the board of supervisors to either approve or deny this application. The application is not a simple rezoning application. Uh the area in question is about uh four and a half to five miles west of the Carmel Church growth area. With a request for a need for utility extensions to the property. So by necessity, we also have to look at a comprehensive plan amendment. Uh to include the property in the growth area as well as address the utility extensions to the site. So there's a lot to do in a very short period of time uh for the county to um. Uh in working with the applicant to try to bring this this project to fruition. With that, uh I would ask the planning commission um to um. Have a work session on this. I would propose January nineteenth, which is the week before your regularly scheduled meeting uh on the twenty sixth. Um so that we can um spend time discussing these matters in greater detail. Um prior to the public hearing rather than having those discussions at the public hearing. I think there's a lot to digest here for the commission. Uh staff still has um. Uh work to do uh on the uh comprehensive plan amendment as well as um. Uh reviewing the application itself, so um. We would request a public hearing um either the twelfth or the nineteenth, but I think the nineteenth would would give us all a little more time. To to get ready.
Alright, sir, thank you.
So this would be a separate work session, the uh the the data center.
Yes, we'll have a work session on wha- whatever night you all choose. We can discuss the transportation uh chapter that night as well. It's one of those, I think, um it it probably is gonna take some time by the planning commission to to look at all the items and and. Um to be ready for, you know, for for the public hearing on twenty sixth. And you may have some questions that come out of that 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 we need to get answered, so.
Alright, so after we after we review this document that's in front of us. On the nineteenth, we're gonna have a work session and at that time we can ask whatever questions we have at that time.
Yes. And then we'll have the public hearing on the twenty sixth and and you can ask questions that night as well.
Then I would make a motion that we take up these two matters on January nineteenth at a work session.
Six, six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Does that work? I'm thinking a couple of hours to work through everything.
At least, yes.
So your appropriate motion would be to adjourn to um January nineteenth work session, six o'clock here.
Alright, then I'll make that motion that we adjourn to January the nineteenth, six P M. Everything you'll see building.
Second.
All in favor say aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries.